All right, well, welcome Wyoming to another special session of our Wyoming March Madness 2022 series on culture change. My name is Carmen Bowman and it's been my pleasure to get to work with you all and get to know you. And I realize it's kind of a tough time for culture change in a way. I'm hearing people share honest feelings like, don't tell me one more great idea that I can't implement right now. And I totally get it. So, so I want to give a disclaimer. I apologize if it's too much. But at the same time, I do believe that there are some culture change practices that can really enhance life for everybody during times of challenge and even crisis. So hopefully we'll kind of touch on those today and maybe touch on things you can't do right now, but maybe later, that kind of thing. So I want to really thank all of you representing nursing in particular today. And I kind of have fun focusing on each different discipline and sharing how you like, you have power within your discipline to save long-term care in a sense. And so do all the other disciplines. So I've highlighted what each can do in these special sessions. So in my mind, everyone, culture change is really what I call still the answer. Culture change is still the answer. It represents what we're all looking for, all the outcomes we all want. And I'll show you. And just in case, you know, you, you, just in case you didn't know, we're talking about changing that institutional culture. Sometimes people don't love the terminology, culture change. They point out, you know, many of us as humans don't like change. I get that. Sometimes, you know, people in the movement call it transformation. If you like that word better, use it, it's a beautiful word. But I just keep landing on culture change because it, you know, all you gotta do is flip it around and add the word institution. You know, we're changing institutional culture and it is worthy of being changed, isn't it, everyone? And it's nobody's fault. So I guess I would also encourage all of us to never, never feel like you're being blamed, to never take offense. We all inherited this institutional model and we don't have to accept it if we don't want to. In fact, this is a kind of the anti, anti, how do you say that? Anti-thesis? Anti-thesis? Oh dear. That, and what I mean is, look at this famous quote from our movement. No longer are the needs of the institution going to come before the needs of the individual. Isn't that the opposite of what an institution is? So, you know, every one of you listening right now has some element of power to flip things, to start actually doing what we want to do, putting the people who live there first, putting their, their wants, needs, desires, routines, sleep, whatever it is first. You know, the individual comes before the institution. And so kind of a great litmus test would be to ask yourselves in our nursing home, who comes first? What comes first? The institution or the individuals who live in it? And to be honest, there are many regulations and, and guidelines right now in the new guidelines and regs of 2016 that actually start speaking that way. And I'm going to show you some of them today. I wish I had time to show all of them. So all the outcomes we all want, let's, I'm going to show you. So think about it, if people, pardon me, if you work hard to create a, a culture that's not institutional, that's actually all about the people who actually live there, guess what? People are going to want to live there, right? And let's just get this one done. That's how I think of it. Hopefully, I mean, not hopefully, I'm guessing y'all know, a nursing home makes money when it's full. And so guess what? These ideas, these changes will draw people to you. You'll be more full and you'll make more money. So we got that one out of the way. Next, you can actually save money, how's that? You know, I don't mean to make it all about money, the fact that I put this first. That is not the priority, but I realize that it's part of the business of having a nursing home, right? So when you give people food they want to eat, when you give choice, when you give the opportunity to choose, notice I'm not saying when you let people choose. To be honest, that's what we call pejorative language. Isn't that interesting? You don't, we don't let adults do anything. You don't allow residents to do things. So instead you, you offer choice. And when you do that, like whether they go help themselves off a buffet or you take their order, or you come side by side. I hope, I hope all of you saw the training we did two weeks ago. There's, there's a thing called a hot food cart. You can bring to residents, oh, it's so cool. They can see the food, smell the food. There's usually a show plate of food that you show them. And if you were with us, Suzanne Querrie, one of her famous stories, famous, ready? And she has a picture. And the quote is that the person, the medicant says, you know, all I really want today is mashed potatoes, you know, a lot of gravy. And because the system has changed, because there's a hot food cart with the potatoes and the gravy right there, the person doing the serving has the power to give the resident exactly what they want. Isn't that cool? And your home ends up saving money when that happens. When we put all this food in front of people that they don't eat, of course, it's wasted time and wasted money. The same goes for when we wake people up. Do you realize when you are gonna wake someone, rouse someone out of their sleep? That is a representation of work. You have to do work to make that happen. And that represents a waste of time. Now, if they're already awake, now there's really no, you know, no hard work to have to wake someone up. And so then we call it redesign work. They're still going to help everyone get dressed, but it's going to be on their schedule, their circadian rhythm. Well, one of my favorite parts of culture change is to actually honor sleep. Still going to do the work, but it's redesigned according to the people who live there. In fact, in the chat box, you guys, tell me, when would you wake up naturally? Do you even know? You know, when do you think you'd wake up? And some of us are going to be early birds and some of us are going to be late birds. And the rest of us are going to be in the middle. And see, everyone's there, everyone gets helped to get dressed. It's just redesigned. We also do personalized med packs, same thing. When you get, when the, when the Mars says meds upon rising, you just gave yourself the power to honor sleep and to give meds when people are ready, rather than wake them up for their meds. Isn't that cool? Redesign work, you're still going to pass all the pills, but it's going to be according to the people who live there. And when you create this culture that's more normal and natural and less institutional, guess what? People are also going to want to work there and you save a lot of money on turnover. Oh, even better, you keep the consistent teamwork going, the consistent care because you don't lose people who know the people that live there, right? So you also, obviously, people tend to be more satisfied. So you don't get internal grievances, calls to the ombudsman, calls to the health department. Again, this was depicted for us by Suzanne Querrie a couple of weeks ago. When you give people real food that they love, real food they want, they tend to eat it and you also save money. We, a very institutional practice is supplements. You know, there's weight loss and we give supplements. We feel like that's what you're supposed to do, right? But to be honest, it's just slapping on another something so that we feel better that we did something. Kind of like alarms, we use alarms and we did something. People have taught me this, it's not even me talking. And then think of your supplements. Do people really drink them all or are you pouring money down the drain? And then I'd love to hear from you guys, who's a malt person? Who's a smoothie person? And who's an ice cream shake person? And I'm a malt person. And if I was drinking a malt, this is what you would hear at the end, ready? Oh, and I'm sad when I hear that sound, anybody else? But you don't really hear that sound too much with insurance. And it just represents real food that, that's less expensive, that people love and they're more likely to eat. Isn't that great? Oh, so good. In fact, on the sessions for therapy, therapies and dining teams, I went into that more if you're interested. We all know the value of having kids come to the nursing home. And I know, I know, we're in a still a pandemic and I know this is still limited to some degree, but we're all going to get there and we all know the value. So I just want to put in a plug for that. As much as you can do to bring people of all ages back together, you know, even though I said children, I like to rephrase it, it doesn't just have to be children, right? Older people need people of all ages. They need 50-year-olds and 40-year-olds and 30-year-olds, right? Let alone children and babies and toddlers, right? And to prove the point, we were so fortunate in Colorado, we did a grant where we did three youth camps. Hey Wyoming, someone do this. So they were day camps, nobody stayed overnight and they were for kids from about April 13th. So that, you know, that's a good age, don't have to help people in the bathroom. And this is my daughter Ellie, she was 12 when we did this. She was kind of like our student leader and she even got paid, isn't that cool? She's now 17. And look at what Maya, that's Maya, look at what she said at our end celebratory event. The children brought my happiness back, my depression is gone and I stopped my medication today. My nursing colleagues, do you realize what if we did more with real life, normal life? More babies, more children, more toddlers? What if nurses talked about that, right? And said, it's better than meds, everybody, we need more babies, we need more toddlers, okay? Now, I, and I, I'm not even being facetious, I would like to invite you to do this. So, so you know, if you think about it, what would naturally happen probably in most nursing homes would be, we'd all look at the activity director, hey, can you get more kids in here? Can you get more babies? And here's what happens, that one person, no matter who they are, it could be you or me, we don't know enough babies at one time. It has to be a group effort. So if I worked with all of you on the line, I'd be bringing it up like weekly, hey, everybody, what, what toddlers, do you even know toddlers? What do you got in your life? Neighbors, cousins, nieces, right? And could you talk to your sister's neighbor about bringing their kids in? Let's, let's start making this happen again. Maybe just bring them and, and they could have lunch with you to start with. And you introduce them to one person, you know, whatever feels right when you can. And you get more and more all the time. You just have this constant, hey, what babies do you know? Hey, what little, hey, what second graders, you know? And, or you do a youth day camp. There's, there's nursing homes around the country, the signature health homes in the South, they have made it okay for staff members to bring their kids with them to work. Can you believe that? They just have, I'm telling you the truth, particularly in the summer, but it's even during the year, you know, the pre-COVID, they had protocols, you know, if you bring your kid, of course you can't not do your work. But here's the things, here's a list of things we always need help with, that your kids can help with. Oh, isn't that cool? They just made it work. I'll tell you what, that would bring about more retention if you just made it work. You could figure it out as a team. And then I'm jumping the gun here, but another big outcome, of course, to a lot of this is you'll, you'll be more compliant with regs, more compliant with regs. I'm going to show you a bunch here in a moment. There are so many good regs that we've been quoting since 1987 that actually depicts a changed culture. And then I'd love to remind you all, those silly regs are only minimal. Like who cares about meeting them? Let's go beyond them. And then some of you might be interested in the clinical outcomes. You know, when you eat what you want, when you want, that whole thing is healthier. We're not forcing people to eat when they're not hungry. Think about that, ask people, are you even hungry? You know, I don't even think we ask because our systems are so broken, we don't know how to honor it if they're not hungry, right? And then we're going to talk about sleep. What if you actually gave uninterrupted sleep? Imagine the improvement in health. What if you gave more control and decision-making back to people? They made more decisions daily and as a group, because why? They live there, you don't. What if you really went out of your way to know people's preferences and even better yet, honor them? Honor their choice, give choice and honor choice. No preference, honor preference. And notice the institution kind of works against people. Again, we don't mean to do that, but just in and of itself, it does. And if we flip it and start working with, with, with going the flow of the people who live there, you know, with, not against, obviously, you know, anxiety is going to be better, depression better, less upset, right? Improved quality of life, physical health and yay, highest practicable level of wellbeing. When I talk about that today too. Did you know stroking a pet reduces blood pressure? Hey nurses, did you hear that? Isn't that cool? What if nurses started to bring up children and animals as an approach, not intervention, by the way? We don't say intervention in the culture change movement. If you want to join us, we use this lovely term, approach. What if, you know, what if nurses brought up these more natural approaches? Look at this, you guys, oh my gosh. I literally saw this with my own two eyes many years ago, before the days that we carried a camera in our phone. Because I wish I had a photo to show you, but there was actually a physician order that said, Michael must have his dog with him wherever he lives. Isn't that cool? Nurses, guess who really writes physician orders? Nurses, do you realize we could have a whole movement to get better orders? This is nowhere on the slide, but here's another example. Dr. Al Power is a physician in our movement and he purposely writes orders for older people who don't have a lot of, you know, stimulation. He orders lotion to be applied twice a day, just so that people get touched more. Isn't that awesome? We need more physician orders like those. And then, did you know, birds literally bring people back to life? Nurses, you're going to love this, two bird stories, ready? Number one, Dr. Bill Thomas, the leader of the Eden Alternative and the greenhouse model. When he discovered all this, in his first book, he writes a story that a man came to the nursing home, moved into the nursing home, by the way. How do you like that compared to was admitted? How many of you like the idea of being admitted? It's very odd language. So when this man moved into the nursing home, he had the diagnosis, failure to thrive. They asked his permission to put a bird in his room, a gummy, for companionship. He said yes. And the staff took care of the bird for, at first, it was such a beautiful like experiment. And then he became more concerned about the bird and he got up and he was with the bird and he took care of the bird. And you know what? Nurses, he got so much better. He moved out of the nursing home into assisted living. Holy moly. Once again, you don't hear that about Zohalak now, do you? Another story, an administrator, some of you may know Brenda Hancock from Cheyenne. She did a lot of animals in Colorado when she worked for a company very into culture change. In fact, this greyhound in this photo is at Christopher House where Brenda Hancock was. And there were two greyhounds. Can you kind of see in the corner, kind of a tall black thing? That's the doggy door for the greyhound. And they had two of them, so they had two doggy doors for the greyhounds to let themselves out and back in. Isn't that marvelous? And there's the petting that reduces blood pressure, right? She also had numerous birds. And one person, a woman that had a bird, it like brought her back to life. In fact, I met this woman, I'm walking down the hall, she's standing in her doorway of her room greeting people. Hi, what's your name? Would you like to meet my bird? And they said she never did that before. She kind of was a, you know, reclusive in her room. And then her roommate, who had dementia, didn't really talk, guess what? Because of the bird, she started to say bird, bird. Isn't that beautiful? Don't hear that about meds so much. So now, I'm going to walk you through some beautiful regulations. Cause I really feel like, you know, all of us are stronger in this business, you know, the regs well. You know, surveyors are holding you accountable for these regs. And I sometimes find that a lot of people don't know what they say. So I just want to encourage you with that. If you don't have your own copy, you don't need to print it, don't print it, way too many pages, but at least have a link to it or have it saved on your computer. A lot of people may not know this, but in 2016, when the new regs came out, this is in the executive summary. Check this out. Quality of life can be difficult to translate into dollars saved. However, there's a body of evidence suggesting factors that improve quality of life may also increase the rate of improvement in quality and can have positive business benefits. Many of the quality of life improvement changes in the spinal cord are grounded in the concepts of person-centered care and culture change. These changes not only result in improved quality of life for residents, they result in improvements in the caregiver's quality of work life and in savings to your building. Wow, isn't that great? Though most people don't know, but a lot of the changes are person-centered care and culture change. And on that note, let me show you a definition CMS has put forth now on what person-centered care even is. So what is person-centered care? It means to focus on the resident as the locus of control and support the resident in making their own choices and having control over their daily lives. And just look at that again, you guys. Focus on the resident as the locus of control. Support this person in making their own choices and having control over their daily lives. It's like the opposite of an institution. In fact, part of me says, is that really a definition of care at all? Isn't that interesting? Part of my brain goes, that's not care. It's actually like life, living life, isn't that cool? And, and yet if it is care, wow, are we doing that? Is your home doing that? I hope so, but most institutions aren't. And so let that guide you, make copies, print it all over the building, gather information, talk about it. Take it to community meetings, neighborhood meetings and help your home get there. And nurses, we will see better health. You know, once again, nurses, we could use you to, to bring up mental health. You know, we all know that when we're in control, when we make choices about our lives, we all are better. We're healthier, we have less problems. So let's talk about it more and make it happen more. By the way, person-centered care, that language, person-centered care is actually outdated. It was outdated the minute that CMS published these new regs. Isn't that funny? That's the thing about a movement. It takes time for things to catch up, right? So think about person-centered, what's the difference between person-centered and person-directed? So person-centered, what, what do we call it? Care. Person-directed, care. Resident-directed, care. So my first point here, I got a lot of points, is what's the difference between centered and directed? And would someone just be so kind to unmute and tell me or in the chat box? I'm letting you all talk, there's not that many of us today, it'd be more fun to talk. What's the difference between person-centered and person-directed?
This is Cheryl. I would, I, for me, person-centered, person-directed is actually an active. Or it is, it's the resident, it's the person who's directing their care. As opposed to person-centered, still feels like we're doing stuff to them.
That's right, thank you, thank you Cheryl. So, so everyone, I hope you just take that back. Person-centered is like better than institution-centered, right? I, I don't know, this just comes out of my head. Person-centered, let's say a resident named Joe likes to golf. And so we go get him some golf clubs and say, hey, let's go golf. That's pretty great, don't you think? But notice, it's like we did it. It's centered on Joe, better than not, right? But, but if it was directed by Joe, notice the slight difference. It would be, hey Joe, I heard you like to golf. I happen to have a golf club, do you want to go swing some or would you like me to get you some? Do you like to still golf? I mean, that's just a tiny example, but, but it is important. And so I encourage you all to please just jump to directed. Even if you're not doing it to the degree you want to, when you use the words, it helps guide the practice in your home. Now, I'm sorry, I don't usually go backwards, but I want to go back and hit a few points, I apologize. Right here, I also want to make a point, person-centered care is not the same thing as culture change. And this is kind of weird. I've noticed in the culture change movement that even leaders of culture change have just flopped over to person-centered care. That's all they talk about, person-centeredness. It's good stuff, right? But notice, care is not the very same thing as culture. Your culture is made up of, I've always heard three things. Your organizational development, in most nursing homes, it's bureaucratic, top-down. Your physical layout, now we know most of your homes are hospital-looking, but notice like Cheryl Sawyer represents St. John's Living Center, which now is Sage Living and so does Seth Robertson. And they rebuilt to the household model, that's ideal, of course. But we know that you may not get there and that's okay. There are other physical changes you could make within a nursing home. And then I've heard the culture is, you know, the people. So it's our personal and professional team, you know, element of culture. And you can find definitions of culture, but you understand what I'm saying. Care is not the same thing as culture. So keep that in mind. And then I want to point out how we focus on care so much, right? Everything's care, care, clinical care, institutional care, the care plan, okay? When I say that, someone tell me what's missing? All about care. What do you think is missing? There's something missing. If someone could please, it'd be fun.
Hey, this is Cheryl.
Thanks Cheryl.
So I would say, when, when, we're really good at care is the stuff that I do to the other person. Right? As opposed to having, I don't know what you'd call it, resident-directed support. Or resident-direct, you know, it's not a care plan, it's their life plan. It's here's the resident saying, here's what I want to do. And then the rest of us saying, oh, I can do this to help you accomplish that. Or someone else is, oh, and then I can do this to help you reach that goal.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what it's about, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. So, you know, forgive me guys, you guys represent care. This is your livelihood, right? But you know what we're missing the boat on? It's talking about life and living. It's sort of like when we only talk about care, we kind of, it's, it's sort of in our work or, or words that we're not talking about the life and the living that the people are doing who actually live there. So in the movement, we, we point that out. And we would love to invite you to join us. Challenge yourself to talk more about life and see what happens, see? And, and then if you need a title, you know, here we add now that directed part, resident-directed life and living, person-directed life and living. Another leader in our movement many years ago said, you know what, guys? Brothers and sisters in culture change. Grammatically, what we mean is self-directed. And she made the point, we're self-directing our lives right now. You are, I am, and we want to our whole life. So it could also be self-directed living, isn't that great? So yes, self-directed care, but even more living because care is part of living. And I believe it would just change things for you all. You're sitting around, talking about a person, try to talk about their life. And of course, their care will also come up, but just see what it does. And then I've got to show you this. So, you know, when most older people move out of their homes, what do they move to first? Independent, what's it called? Independent living. And then they need some assistance and what's it called? Assisted living, ready? Then they need more care and what's it called? Long-term care or skilled nursing, right? Cause that's what they need and that's what we give. And what's missing again? The living. In fact, a leader, another leader in our movement did this one time years ago. I cried once you did this, ready? Where did the living go? I'm like, wow, even in the titles, we lost the word living. So you don't have to let that happen if you don't want to. Here's another proof of it, right? It would be nice if when a person moves into a nursing home, they ask him or her, how do you want to live? And not just all that medical stuff. And that's from a person who lives in a nursing home. Isn't it interesting? We work in them, but we don't live in them. And I think therein lies the answer, actually, everyone. If we look at the nursing home as our place of work, the medical institution where I'm the director of nursing, then I have to be very nursing. In Florida, the directors of nursing are wearing lab coats. Did you know that? Because they're in charge of the patients, they use that word a lot, and the patient's care. Do you see what I'm trying to draw out here? And the people who live there don't really necessarily want that. And hopefully you've all heard this, when, when you live somewhere where it's all medical, everything's a therapy. We don't have to call everything art therapy and pet therapy and aromatherapy. The word therapy implies what? You're sick or something's wrong with you. And it implies short-term to fix you up, like a treatment, see? The scrubs, you guys, they imply, I live somewhere where everyone's sick. I guess I'm sick too. And some homes don't, don't require scrubs. If I ran, got to have the privilege of leading a community, I would really talk about trying to move away from the medical clothing and not wearing the medical clothing is a practice of culture change. So I, I dare you all, start looking at this building as a home and a house to the people who live there, where you only work, you only work there. I'm not diminishing you, but if you like, get that in your head, you don't even live there, they do. How can we switch things to really be more honoring to them? I don't have time for this whole quote, if you want to go see it, I highly recommend it. This is a leader in our culture change movement, Carter Catlett-Williams. Guess what? We don't use restraints anymore because of people like her. She was a voice. Kind of like this little voice about culture change. She was a voice about not using restraints. Isn't that cool? And then she herself got older and she herself moved out of her family's estate, how she says it, to an independent living in somewhere in the East Coast. And guess what? She didn't last very long in the sense that she said, I gotta go home. And she made it work to live at home. In her last days, she passed away about a year ago. Ninety-two, I believe. And from that experience, everyone here, one thing she says, what is lacking is real life. Real life is not found in programs. Real life is in the give and take of everyday life. And so I've encouraged all your teammates and rec and activities to not be so focused on programs and group activities. Most people don't want them. Let's focus on real life. And she also brings up, like, let's focus also on being together. This everyday life, she later says, we don't belong in ghettos of old age, we belong together. And I think it's true. You know, I love old people. I'm guessing you do too in this business, but when I'm old, I don't want to just be with old people, do you? And then here's another neat way of thinking about all this. Pretend this, these photos depicts a perfect care plan. Okay, nurses, look close. Does that look like a perfect care plan? We've got bathing and eating and meds and going to the bathroom and getting dressed, ADLs. And it's perfect. And it's kind of boring, right? I mean, just think about that, a perfect care plan. Okay, then what? And what if the care, ooh, like Cheryl, you just said, supports the life that someone wants to live? And perhaps someone, this could be me, anybody else? Just wants to go watch the birds out the window or sit outside and watch the birds. I love it. How about you? And, and I dare you guys, figure it out. Like, that's more than a care plan. Now, I don't know the right word. Some places, I guess, have said life plan, which is fine, do it. It's, it's better. You know, when you change language, it's wordy, it's weird. You feel a little awkward, right? The regs still say care plan, sure. But I'll tell you another neat thing, the Eden Alternative calls them growth plans. And now I think maybe we're talking. How does someone want to grow? You know? Continue to be who they are. I don't know. And then see, we're going to talk about this, but could, could the care just almost be on the side? The way I think about everyone, I teach a class called Good Care Should Be A Given, shouldn't it? In a way, aren't we talking too much about care in a way? No disrespect, but all I mean is like, by now, shouldn't care be so well-done, we barely have to talk about it? No, I'm sorry, I know COVID staffing. Uh, it's not a fair thing to say perhaps, but the, I, you know, theoretically, um, good care should be a given and then perhaps the real focus could be on how someone wants to live today. Like that woman said, it'd be nice if they asked you how you want to live. So, um, I, I shared that with another group in Florida recently, and the response back from one administrator was simply, we're going to start asking that question. How do you want to live while you're living here? If that's, you know, the simple thing we could do, maybe consider that. Now, I'd like to show you some really great, really great regs that stand for changing culture at the same time. So this first one under resident rights. Uh, I don't know if you're noticing, but I don't say that word that starts with an F. I don't know if you've all heard this, but in the culture change movement, we try to make the point that this house and home is better than a facility. The word facility doesn't indicate anything to do with home. And perhaps it's part of our institutional problem. Uh, if you think of the word facility, if you look it up, it mostly just means a building, right? But in real life, most of us know that a facility is like a building where stuff happens, the warehouse or the event center or the school. And why is a school a facility? Because no one lives there. Isn't that interesting? So you don't have to use it, even though it's everywhere you go in all the regs. So I would say that the nursing home must treat, or the home or your community must treat each resident with respect and dignity and care for each resident in a manner and an environment that promotes maintenance or enhancement of his or her quality of life, recognizing each resident's individuality. Do you see how strong that is, man? I would recommend using that sentence for a while. Make it your motto, I would, because it brings up quality of life. That too does not get talked about as much. I'll, um, actually, I don't think I have a slide about this, but I've shared this with your activities and social service teams. Uh, I'd like for y'all to think about this, okay? Nursing regulations, who do they go to? You guys, nurses, right? Activity regulations, who do they belong to? Your activity team. Social service regs, social services, right? Administrators, administrators, ready? There's quality of life regs. Who do they go to? Like, I mean sincerely. Not just, oh, they belong to all of us. Like, who reads them? Who's being held accountable to them? And guess what? I think that could be part of the problem. In most homes, we don't have a quality of life department. Therefore, we don't have anyone really attending to it in a real intentional way. So I hand that off to you as a gift. What if somehow quality of life got more attention? One idea might be, uh, social services and activities become a team and they're the quality of life team. Because together, they can make more happen. Now, of course, it could be anyone. It could be a quality of life team of, of anyone. But you, you think about that and see what you come up with. And then really talking about and not ever letting it drop that each person is an individual, individuality. Oh, so strong. Um, another thing for nurses I like to teach and remind you all is beware of generic practices. When we say everyone has to be checked and changed every two hours, is that generic care or is that individualized care? We're supposed to give individualized, right? Some people might need checked more often, some less, some not at all, right? It's good. There's freedom in, in serving the individual versus the institution and the generic practices. All right, check this one out. Your home must protect and promote the rights of the residents. Wow. You know, it never said that before. That's new. And I kind of wonder if it's kind of like this. See, I've, I've studied regs, I've been a surveyor, I worked at CMS in Baltimore. I taught surveyors. I don't know why regs have just become a part of my life. And I sort of feel like maybe there's something being said between the lines. You kind of hear this too? Hey, nursing homes, you've been really good at telling residents what their rights are and posting it and maybe reviewing one every month at resident council, but you really need to up your game. You need to protect them and even promote them. Isn't that great? So whenever a resident says, I won't, or I must, you know, we should never have to run and get the social worker because we all are advocates for residents. We protect and promote their rights. Isn't that great? And then look, look at this. Residents' wishes and preferences must be considered in the exercise of rights by the representative, the family member too. And, and it's sort of like CMS knows what's going on there too sometimes. Now, I don't mean any disrespect to family members, but sometimes it's sort of like we give them too much power too soon, is how I would suggest you think about it. Um, and, and an easy way out, an easy way to remedy that without having to do much is just to reframe the questions. So instead of saying, hey, family member, what do you want for your mom? You would say, hey, family member, what do you think your mom wants? What has your mom said she wants? How would your mom live her life all along with her diabetes? And when cake was presented to her, you know? What would your mom say? What are your mom's goals? By the way, this isn't on the slide, but in the new regs, the resident's goals, like singular apostrophes, the resident's goals are now in the reg 153 times. We are supposed to be asking residents what their goals are for their life, for their incontinence, for their walking, et cetera. I love that. And then check this out. This is totally from our movement. The right to be informed of risks and benefits of proposed care. So, um, Mrs. Smith, the doctor recommends pureed diet. But you know, there's risks and benefits to a pureed diet. The benefit, the reason why is because of the choking. And so that you might not choke, that's a benefit, but the risk is it doesn't taste great. And you might not eat so well, and you might lose weight, and you might get pressure sores. And you might be miserable, you might have bad quality of life. You know, we, I don't think we're, I, I haven't heard of us being great at really spelling out both sides. And then I want to show you, look at these choice words that show up. Um, so we're, they have the right to be informed of risks and benefits of proposed care. Look, look at all these choice words of treatment and treatment alternatives or treatment options, and to choose the alternative or option he or she prefers. Wow. Do you see CMS making a point there? That is very good. That should support you all. Um, when it's tricky stuff, remember to always document the dialogue of discussion. You know, I talked to Mr. Smith, that cake could kill you, or that bacon, or that, you know, the chips. And he, you know, an easy example is he keeps saying, I don't care if I die. And you just keep documenting that. And then I know it gets harder, but keep moving in that direction. Um, you know what people tell you, even with that words too. And a POA really doesn't go into effect until someone's been deemed incompetent, to be totally honest. And we don't talk about that very much either. Okay, look at this one, the right to request refused and/or discontinue treatment. They used to say the right to refuse treatment, and it was so strong. And now it's stronger because not only do you have the right to refuse, you can also, also request. And if you don't want to keep going, you can discontinue. Under self-determination, the right to choose activity schedules, including sleeping and waking times, healthcare and providers of healthcare services. And what's really the strongest here, everyone, and this is not new, it's been here since 1987, we've been quoting it. The right to choose schedules. Did you know that? Now, it brings up including sleeping and waking times. That's great, that's new. However, it, watch this. If I walk around and ask everyone, hey, hey Cheryl, when would you like to get up? Hey Carrie, when would you like to get up? Hey Emily, hey Deb. Okay, that's what we tend to do, right? And it's choice, right? Because what, everyone's different. If I was you all, I would recommend you start talking about the value of sleep and we're going to not wake anyone up. So your body can decide. The true choice is your body gets to decide when to wake up. Does anyone love that as much as I do? I have to show you one more about choice and then we go to more sleep. The right to make choices about aspects of his or her life that are significant for them. I'd love to ask you guys, what would be significant to you? Could each one of you add something in the chat box? It would be so great. If you moved in, what kind of comes to the top of your list? What would be very significant to you? Why don't you just go with the top of your list? And I know sleep would be at the top of mine. How many of you would rather be sleeping right now? Anybody? And I'm not offended if you would. Not at all, because I maybe would too. And if you think of not having to wake up your alarm, people call it blissful. And why would we make older people wake up? Why? They don't have a job to go to. In fact, why we do, um, I'll, I'll talk about in a minute. The benefits of being well-rested, you all know this, but nurses, we need your help. Please bring up being well-rested. You have power as nurses to tell the kitchen not to make Carmen's food early in the morning. No. She's going to be coming in later in the, in the hour that food is served or whatever. Or hold her plate or whatever. And we're going to see less depression, anxiety. People are much more alert, they can take in the day more energy. My goodness, nurses, you know better than I do what happens when you sleep. Our bodies basically heal. Why? Why would we wake people up? When we could actually give them this gift, less behavioral expression, better mood. Did you know you'll see falls go down if you work on honoring sleep? I, I, I've been doing studies on it and I've worked with teams. So why would we wake people? You know, we wake them up early and for what? They sit there, they experience the hurry up and wait for how much money a month? And then if you try to help someone eat, guess what? It's not even safe when someone's actually sleeping. So there's lots of reasons to honor sleep. That arbitrary breakfast time in your building, who even said it? Did the people who live there even want it? An easy way to get to open dining, everyone, is to start saying breakfast is served between seven and eight, let's say. Instead of saying breakfast is at seven. And guess what? Your CNA have time to actually do the cares they want to do, right? Brush the hair, brush the feet. But when we make them hurry, 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 get everyone in there at seven, you know that some cares are not being done. And notice all those choice regs we just went through. When you offer an open dining time, you now are offering choice more than you ever did before. Your home is now more compliant with choice regulations than it's ever been before. And that 14-hour rule, it's too bad we ever learned it as 14 hours, guys. Here's why. Here's why. The same sentence that has 14 hours, I apologize, I should have had it on a slide. In one sentence, there shall not be more than 14 hours between supper and breakfast the next day unless, it keeps going. Unless there is a nourishing snack provided and a resident group agrees, you can go 16 hours. Isn't that cool? It's too bad we never learned it as the 16-hour rule. Plus, here's the, don't even worry about 16. Here's why. If you do open dining, think about this, the end of supper dinner to the beginning of breakfast the next day, guess what? The end to the beginning is always within 14 hours anyway, and your home has met the intent. There's 14 hours between there. And remember, you're more compliant. And it's less rush, better care. Eat when you want to eat, sleep until you wake up. Oh, glorious. Um, another cool reg, did you know, um, your home must consider the views of a resident or family group and act promptly upon grievances and recommendations of such groups concerning issues of resident care and life. Love that part in your building. Daily community meetings is an answer to that and deal with issues in real time. Some homes do daily community meetings with staff and residents instead of even monthly resident council. I'm running out of time. We have a whole show from last Tuesday on community meetings. Another cool thing, nurses, you might want to know about. Um, under the intent of activities, it brings up to create opportunities for each resident to have a meaningful life by supporting his or her domains of well-being. Look at this. Security, autonomy, growth, connectedness, identity, joy and meaning. Wouldn't it be cool if you started asking people who live there, what brings you joy? I somehow, I don't know how it is so late, but I really want to show you guys this video. This is a raw video of me interviewing a person living in a nursing home. Um, I probably don't have time. So I want to show you this, highest practicable level of well-being. You've heard it in all the regs. It's in everyone, right? Social services, quality of life, quality of care. Um, we're supposed to help people reach their highest practicable level of well-being. And they also divide it out. You've probably seen this. But I want to show you that the strongest place is under care planning, okay? Look at this. Did you know that your care plans must describe the following? The services that are to be furnished to attain or maintain the resident's highest practicable physical, mental and psychosocial well-being. Your care plan must describe that for each resident. I have yet to see one. And I want to teach you, it's not practical. We're used to saying that. So if you want, everyone, repeat after me, practicable, practicable. We're not used to that word. And I, I'd like me to get used to it. This is one of the best things about our regulations. And your nursing homes sign up to meet these regs. And look at what it says. It's got the word able right in it. That helps. What is someone truly able to do? What is their innate capability based solely on their abilities, their limitations and their potential? Independent of the external limitations, whereas practical is what we might say, well, sorry, we don't have staff for that, we don't have time for that. And again, I apologize, we're in days that are hard right now. But something really to be aware of is, is that it breaks into physical, mental and psychosocial. And so if you want to see this video, it's in some of the other special sessions that I've done. Um, but start asking the person, the resident, how might you describe your physical well-being? And this man with Parkinson's explained, well, I probably should walk more. So it tends to be walking, it tends to be feeding myself, even if it takes longer, right? And then start to ask people, how might you describe your mental well-being? This brilliant man actually had an idea for an invention. What if we helped him make an invention? My gosh. And then psychosocially, he brings up that he's younger than most of the people in the nursing home. And he feels that, and he'd like to meet some younger people. Isn't that cool? So then, did you know that if the survey team can show that someone is capable of a higher level of practicable, that's actually actual harm. It's actually actual harm. Sorry to tell you that, but look at this, the definition of actual harm, it's a very level three, indicates non-compliance that results in actual harm and can include but may not be limited to clinical compromise, decline or the resident's inability to maintain or reach his or her highest practicable level of well-being. Okay, some other neat nursing things I want to toss in for you guys. Did you know that one of our practices in the culture change movement, it's an artifact on the artifacts of culture change, is to not use the old is to not use the old medical hospital style call lights? So notice in the photo, there is no call light over the door. And instead, they rewired and made it a porch light. So when it's on, the person needs help. That is the call light and it looks so much more normal. Isn't that cool? They also put in a doorbell and also mailboxes. I have been sharing this with particularly your environmental services teams. And then did you also know, find the word or, the little word or with your eyes. Did you know your call system can be through audible or visual? Or, isn't it sad that most of us have always been both? If I worked with y'all, I'd say, let's cut down the audible. Let's talk about it, decide, should we try it? I think people are quite capable of going with visual only and you get a much more quiet atmosphere. Plus, there's a reg that calls for comfortable sound levels. Look at this. And a particular concern is residence control over unwanted noise. Can they have control over this? They could, you could turn them off. Another neat thing that might interest you all, the Life Safety Code two thousand and twelve uh, has four big culture change changes. And these, uh, this one's called corridor seating. You know how it used to be that it, you couldn't have seating in the corridor? But as of two thousand and twelve, as long as it's fastened to the floor or wall, as long as it leaves six feet passageway, as long as the groupings are on one side and your groupings don't exceed fifty square feet and they're ten feet apart, you could have chairs in the hallway. Isn't that cool? For people to walk and rest and walk again. So I invite y'all to join us, keep joining us. Every month, we have a culture change webinar, last Friday of the month. In fact, this Friday is a big one. Is that tomorrow? The homes that have been in the project are going to share their journeys. We really are trying to bring culture change to Wyoming. We have big goals. We have lots of information at the Mountain Pacific website. These are the homes in the project. I, I work with five homes each year to implement culture change. If you'd like to be a part of that, I'm taking applications right now to start in April. And, uh, like I said, they're tomorrow. Come join us and hear from them. Then we have one more conference session on Tuesday and it's restorative sleep. I'm sorry, it cut off their restorative sleep at five PM in order to try to honor your night shift team members. We have one more special session for administrative teams next, uh, Wednesday. And then we close the whole big month with our steering committee. If any of you want to be on the steering committee, let me know. We have two big goals for your state, that everyone working in a nursing home learns about culture change. We could use your help and every person who lives in one doesn't get woken up. Everything we've done is recorded at the Mountain Pacific website. Language, did you know language even comes up under resident rights? Avoiding the use of labels, you know, most of you know I love language, I don't have time. So let me close and then let's take some questions or comments. I, I really think that you all as nurses could really, perhaps, I don't know, I'd, I'd invite you to take the lead on some of these things, giving more authority, more decision-making, honoring sleep, not waking people up in the morning. Helping them to eat when they want to eat. Creating home, not even home light, mailboxes, doorbells, the porch light, the light only. Talking more about life, normal life, real life, living, quality of life. Maybe diving into this highest practicable, I would recommend just do it at care conference, just slowly start to do it for each person. And then perhaps look into the seven domains of wellbeing. There's a white paper you can get for free at the Eden Alternative website. And did you notice, all those things are actually required in the regulations? So, um, nursing, those are my thoughts for you. I'm so sorry I had to speed it up, but who has any questions or comments? Cheryl says she loves sleeping with her cat. Cindy says we always have an HF snack and we have thirteen hours between meals. Yep. All right. Thanks, guys. Oh, let's see, do I have to let you talk? I'm pressing the button, ask to unmute. Could I hear from each of you? It gets so quiet at this point. Who has any thoughts, questions, comments?
I would be really curious to see in just the context of the COVID regulations, how we can get kiddos back in the facility. Um, I have it on my to-do list to look at like our four H day camps or our rec center day camps and see, because we have a park right behind our beautiful building, um, that looks over that park. So I, I really want to see how we can get kids in.
Who's talking?
This is Cindy from Legacy, sorry.
It's okay. Hey Cindy, thank you. You know, guys, I got to interact with the surveyors yesterday. It would be very fitting for us to ask that question of the survey team, because they've all heard a lot of this now. And, you know, maybe outdoor visits, you know, if a kid is part of a family, I think they could be the family that comes to visit, right?
Yeah, if they're, if they're visiting a specific resident, we allow them in and we just follow that CDC guidance, two and under doesn't wear a mask.
Yeah.
But older than that, they have to wear a mask if they can't wear their PP appropriately. We just educate on the risks and ask, stay in the room and not potentially expose other residents. But I, I agree, I want to see more kids in the facility, our residents. And it doesn't have to be their grandkids, they love seeing other people's grandkids.
Hey Cindy, what if you and I forge an email together to the health department?
I'd love to.
Let's do. Okay, I'll, I'll contact you. Awesome, thank you. Okay, guys. Keep it, keep it coming. Questions, comments, ideas? Anybody? Would love to hear from y'all. What do you think? Alrighty, well. I guess we're done. Thank you so much for coming, everyone. Oh, oh my gosh, this is really important, guys. This is old fashioned. Can you tell me or quickly put in the chat box, your knowledge before and after, one to five, low to high? This is the scale we're just using in Wyoming for these, uh, trainings. So your knowledge, thank you Cindy, before and after. Thank you Emily. Thanks for joining. Thank you Sophia, we'll be in touch. Alrighty, anybody else? I would love to know. Thank you Cheryl, thanks for coming today.